Option is because it will pop to us. So wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Roll call. Matt Waldinger.
I'm here.
Lisa Austin.
Present.
Don Crenshaw. Katie, that's me. Russ LaFleur.
Here.
Kim Cardman.
Here.
John Gro.
Here.
Genie Miller.
Here.
I figured that. Paul Pangrass.
Here.
And Lacy Lundey.
I'm here.
And Cindy Wells is going to be option, right?
Yes. Yep. And we do have a number of other people. If you would like me to announce them or have them announce themselves. We have Adam Trot I see on the line. Adam, is there anyone else with you? Good evening, Adam. Nope, no one else. We have a Morgan R. Morgan, if you could share your last name for our minute, that would be helpful. Morgan, is there any way you could unmute and share your last name or perhaps list it in the chat so we have record? All right, I guess we'll have to send a chat message. And then we have Autumn Parker joining us as well. Good evening.
Greetings, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Hello.
All right. And we'll just, we'll keep monitoring. I don't know if we'll have other guests joining us throughout the evening, but like I said, Laura is going to be monitoring that for us. We have Laura Tishashni from our office with us as, as well, as well as John McGrainer joining us this evening. Too. So like I said, we have a, we have a nice Hollywood squares type thing going on here. Alrighty. Take it away, Charles.
Okay, how about the review and approval of the minutes from the last meeting? Are there any additions or corrections? If not, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes. Anybody?
This is Matt. I'll make that motion.
Adam, okay, and second by.
Can someone second the minutes?
I'll second the minutes.
Okay, Genie.
Genie. Okay, I'll. Everybody, uh, forth?
Yes.
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 Anybody against it? Approved. Hearing of the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to the commission?
Charles, we do have a short presentation this evening from Autumn Parker. So whenever she is ready to begin, who has the floor?
I think Morgan is unmuted.
Oh, okay. Autumn, before you begin, would it be okay if I get that last name? Hi, Morgan. Just for our note, notes, could I? Yeah.
This is Michael Orr. I'm on my granddaughter's computer.
Oh, hi.
I had unmuted. So it's, that's Morgan's my granddaughter, so.
Well, that's great. Thank you. Okay. Wonderful. Well, you are unmuted. So whatever you did, it works. And I will note that Morgan is actually Michael. I'll probably actually have Laura rename you if that's okay on the on the list. So welcome. We're glad to, glad to have you. So the mystery is no more. It's Michael and not Morgan. All right. Okay, well, Autumn, I, you are welcome to take whenever you are ready. If you need a screen sharing privileges, those are enabled. So if you have a presentation, the floor is yours.
Absolutely. Thank you all so much, and I appreciate the opportunity in the five minutes that I have to be able to present to you this presentation. It is not a visual presentation. It's just going to be me speaking. Nevertheless, I appreciate all of the effort and attention that you give me. So again, my name is Autumn Parker, and I am a proud born and raised Erie resident, and I'd say an even prouder neighbor of the beloved Mighty Fine Donuts. Don't know if we're fans in here, I surely am. And I, again, am here representing the steering committee for a project called Undesigning Erie's Red Line. And this project has been initiated by Erie County and City Council members Andre Horton and Liz Allen. And the five-member Undesign Steering Committee also includes our fiscal sponsor, Dr. Janelle Newman from The Script Project. So again, I thank you for this opportunity to connect with you on their behalf and, most importantly, to advocate for a dynamic community building project that aligns with the inclusive visions and goals of the Erie County Department of Planning and Community Development. So this process began last fall when Horton and Allen convened a large group of regional stakeholders to bring an interactive, nationally renowned, community engagement project called Undesign the Red Line. And it was meant to transform Erie County, specifically addressing the county's September 8, 2020 declaration that racism is a public health crisis. And I want to emphasize, most importantly within this, that the words I'm speaking right now are nothing new. If anything, they echo the calls of the residents and leaders before us made, not just last year, but since the founding of this great city. And we can all recognize the potential Erie has, but we must also recognize through structural and socioeconomic changes, the obstacles that impede us from really reaching our full potential. And among these obstacles that continue to impede our progress is systemic racism. And to begin actively addressing racism as a public health crisis, we must recognize how the impacts of redlining in particular continue to affect our Black and Brown residents. So if anyone is not familiar, redlining is a discriminatory federal practice initiated in the 1930s that put services literally out of reach for residents of certain areas based on race or ethnicity. And so these are literal drawings on a map that carve out different sections throughout a city that tell residents where they can live based on their racial identity and community. And thus that determines as well the resources such as schools, hospitals, parks, housing, banking, and other daily necessities and activities they can have access to that we all enjoy. And so it is crucial that we not only become collectively aware of this harmful and disempowering system, but that we enact the legislation and policies needed for real change. And we believe that this change can be achieved through bringing the nationally recognized organization called Undesigning, excuse me, Designing the We to Erie to guide us in implementing Undesigning Erie's Red Line. And so let me explain this project because I know we're using a lot of words, but the Undesign project will include a five-part interactive exhibit that will, one, educate the community on the history of redlining, tell the stories of local residents impacted by it, and then engage stakeholders through workshops to resolve it. And the Undesign project will host outreach events, train local volunteers, facilitate workshops, and ultimately establish empowered community advisory committees and policies directing their actions. And these are concrete actions that are tangible steps that follow through on the verbal promises that we've made to Black and Brown Erie residents. Our steering committee that I am presenting on behalf of tonight is asking for $5,000 towards our $10,000 startup from Erie County to implement the planning phase of this community building project. And these funds will be allowed for formalized engagement with Designing the We, establishment of an advisory board, initial community outreach, and will be used as additional matching funds for the fundraising we are working on. And in fact, the last three days, our fiscal sponsor, Dr. Newman, has already raised $650 from individual stakeholders, clearly demonstrating that the community support is here and ready for this endeavor. And so I know my time is coming to an end, but specifically, we are asking you as a committed member of this commission to contact local elected leaders and urge them to devote the funds necessary to allow this project to proceed. These funds can be donated through our PayPal account set up by, again, our fiscal sponsor at bit.ly/utrfunds. I even have a picture of this. As I know this is recorded, I want to make sure I'm being mindful of individuals who prefer visual means. And while we are building this financial support, we ask also that if you are aware of any other avenues outside of the county that we can tap into, you will inform us of such resources. You can contact me directly at autumn, A-U-T-U-M-N, like Nick, dot Parker, P-A-R-K-E-R, sixty-five at gmail dot com with any advice regarding that. And so I know that was a lot of information to take in and digest, but again, I thank you for the full time and attention you have given to really listening to the needs of not just the steering committee, but that of our Erie community. And I hope that while all of these truths I've spoken may not be true for everyone on this call, we recognize they are for others, and we will commit to addressing them then in real ways. Thank you very much.
Well, Ms. Parker, that was a very interesting session, and we really appreciate you coming in and telling us about this. It's really important to a lot of people. And thank you again, and we'll see what we can do on your end.
Charles, can I ask a couple of questions? This is Honey.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, actually, I guess first, would you mind in the chat putting your contact information so that web address that you mentioned and held up on the paper as well as your email? That would be helpful for anyone that wants to grab that for themselves that's currently here. And then is there like a one sheet, right, on the initiative that could be sent? You could send it to me, and I could send it out to the Planning Commission.
We don't necessarily. Oh, I'm so sorry, honey. I apologize.
It's okay. No, no, it's totally fine. I was kind of like staggering there a little bit at the end.
It's okay. It's, what day is it? Is it Thursday? Yes, it is.
It is Thursday, yeah.
We're making it here. Nevertheless, we don't have a one-page sheet. In fact, we have a two-page proposal. Nevertheless, I can quickly sum up the main prioritized focus points in a quick visual document and send it to you if you don't mind.
Yeah, and even that two-page proposal, whatever you, it doesn't have to be one sheet, whatever you have. That way then it can be shared out with people on the, as a follow-up to the meeting. That would be great.
Is by tomorrow morning feasible for you?
That's completely fine because honestly, when I leave this meeting this evening, I do not check my email.
No, you and I both.
Really trying to have some good boundaries with that, unless it's an emergency. So does anyone else have any other questions or comments?
Oh, yeah, I have one.
Go ahead, Charles.
Which legislators does she want us to try to approach about this? Is it local or state or?
Well, I want to first reiterate that this is a national project that we are bringing to Erie. So it is renowned. It is well-known. It is credible. So there are leaders across the nation who are familiar with this project. And if you have connections with any leaders, I'm not going to name any specifically because I don't want to limit our resources and pool. If you know anyone who supports this work and advocacy and is also familiar with this organization, please reach out to them. And that, again, is national, county, local, et cetera.
I will say, so this is Honey again. I will say I did sit on in on an early presentation about Undesign the Red Line. It is really powerful. I think it would be a really useful project to have to come to Erie County. And once again, Autumn mentioned that Erie County did declare racism a public health crisis. And County Council has been approached to approve a diversity and inclusion officer in their complement of staff that has not been approved yet. However, a diversity and inclusion task force has been developed at the county level. And interestingly, just because of previous life and past work that I've done, I'm actually a co-chair of the Training, Retention, and Promotion segment of that particular council. So the county is really internally trying to do the work. This is this complements that, but also goes a whole lot further than, than what we're, we're doing at the county level. So thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to be heard? Is there anybody else in the public that would like to be heard? Being nobody else from the public wants to be heard, we'll go to Communications. Department of Planning and Community Development report. Honey?
Yes. Hi, good evening again. So I don't have a lot to share with you. I can give that report rather quickly. One of the requests I would make of you all is originally when I was developing the agenda, per your request to have our staff start to come and inform the Planning Commission on different aspects of the programs that we have available for the municipalities, we have John McGrainer joining us this evening to talk about the programs that he oversees, which is the Municipal Assistance Program and the Agriculture Preservation Program. I do have him further down on the agenda under New Business. How, so I would like to request, if you see fit, that perhaps he give his presentation under our Communications segment from the department. That way he does not have to necessarily stick around for the entirety of the meeting.
I don't see any problem with that. I don't think anybody else has. If they do, they should tell us now.
Nope, it's good, John.
So John, if you, you, if you'd like to lead off or while you get set up, you want me to mention a couple of things, I'm glad to, I'm glad to take your cue.
Doesn't matter to me. I'm ready to go.
All right, sir.
With, you know, not one, but, but this is bonus night. You get two presentations for the price of one.
Well, I'm glad I'm here.
Your lucky night, John.
Wow, double header from John McGrainer. Wow.
Exactly.
Would you like an intro? I can do that for you if you'd like.
Oh, yeah.
Bumper music going, and, and here's John McGrainer.
All right. So anyways, two presentations, two, two of the programs that I happen to administrate. And so I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. I'm working with a laptop that I'm not real familiar with, so please bear with me, but I think, I think things should work out okay here. All right. Working out so far.
Yeah.
Alrighty, so the first program that I'm going to talk about is Erie County's Agricultural Land Preservation Program, which I've been administering that program since 2010. So it's been a while. But the program itself, the state of Pennsylvania is nationally recognized as one of the leaders in farmland preservation. And so there's a state program. Erie County participates in that program. And it's a program where every other year we accept applications from landowners who are interested in participating. It's voluntary. And basically what we do is we purchase conservation easements on farmland so that it's preserved in perpetuity. All the applications are ranked and scored against some pretty stringent and objective criteria, which includes soils, the development potential of the farm, the farmland potential, and also clustering, which is the proximity to other farms. It's something that, you know, it's important for a lot of different reasons. You know, obviously, you know, the, the key, key factor is, you know, it's preserving agricultural land for the future. You know, we've probably all heard the saying, you know, no farms, no food. So it's very important from that respect. But a lot of people really don't really understand the full economic impact that farming has to Erie County. I happened to just look it up today as I was preparing for this meeting. The most recent agricultural census, which happens to be from 2017, shows that Erie County, in 2017, the market value of agricultural crops was over $82 million. So it's, it's, it's an economic driver. I think it's number seven in the state of Pennsylvania. But farming really is big business. So it's, you know, it's important for that reason at all. And then my personal favorite, you know, beyond those two reasons, is that it just happens to, you know, you know, I go from community to community to community, you know, and as I'm working with them, and it seems everywhere I go, people just love, you know, rural character. You know, and they love that rural way of life, you know, the outdoors and the green space. And, you know, farming is really critical for that, you know, and if we start to lose our farms, we're going to slowly but surely start to lose that rural way of life. So to me, I, I think that's really why I'm so passionate about this program. I'm not that, you know, the other reasons are not also very, very important. Advantages to landowner, you know, most of the, most of the landowners that we deal with, you know, it's just, you know, the, the, the land that they own, it's really their retirement fund. So they really, their only options when they go to retire is, you know, either sell the land or, you know, in this case, this gives them an opportunity to, you know, basically get some money out of their land while still keeping the land in their, in their family. So, you know, it works out really well from that perspective. The landowners retain private control of the property. And, you know, if they're, if they're not using it for retirement, we've had a lot of owners pay down their mortgages on their farms, which just makes things easier for them. We've had landowners who were interested in basically putting money back into the business, so to speak. You know, farm equipment is very, very expensive. Buildings have to be maintained, you know, so forth and so on. So there's a lot of practical uses, you know, where those funds really do help the farming community. Incidentally, as I'm going through this PowerPoint, all of the photos, with the exception of the rural street scene with the street, all of these photos are from farms that have been preserved through the Erie County program. This one happens to be out in Gerard. It's the, the Biome Farm. And as you can see, it's, it's grape vineyards. Okay, the, the program itself is overseen by a seven-member agricultural ag preservation board, which consists of three farmers, a municipal official, one developer, one county at-large representative, and one city at-large representative. They oversee the program. All of those positions are appointed by the county executive and then ratified by county council. We do happen to have one of our board members with us here tonight, Paul Pangrass, who has been involved in the program for a long time, and he's, he's, he's been a very active supporter of it. It's folks like Paul that really make this program work. In addition to overseeing the ag program, the board, you know, they really had the final say when it comes to negotiating, you know, the easement purchase offers. And they ultimately make those recommendations to the state, you know, to the, you know, the state. It's basically that most of the easements are purchased by the Commonwealth, and the county's job is really to facilitate that process and make recommendations. We meet three or four times a year. This, this, this year, we happen to be meeting four times a year, but typically we only have three meetings a year. All of our meetings are open to the public. Obviously, during this time of COVID, we've been doing the Zoom thing. Seems to be the, you know, the, the thing to do nowadays. Our next meeting, if everybody's interested, is coming up on April 12. And if you, if you're interested, you know, contact our office, the Planning Department, about a week in advance, and we'll get the Zoom information out to you. For its program history, this goes way back. It was established in 1992. So we've been at this a while. I think our first farm was, was, was actually preserved in 1993. So it always takes a little while to get up and running, but nevertheless, we've been at this for a while. We just, last month, in fact, preserved our 77th farm easement. So that's, that's a pretty good number. We're sort of the leaders in the whole, you know, northwestern corner of the state. We've preserved a total of 9,276 acres over this, this period of time. Here's a map that shows all, everything marked in red there that you see on your screen. All those parcels, all, those are all farms that have been eased, you know, through the county's program. The green that you're looking at is something that we also are interested in. Those are agricultural security area farms, which is a separate program, and it's actually a series of programs. You know, each municipality that wants to participate has an agricultural security area, which is part of Pennsylvania's Right to Farm Act. And although we don't really have any administrative or responsibilities with respect to the ASA areas, we, we assist by sort of keeping track of things, and a lot of the municipalities find that helpful. But I want to say there's a little over 72,000 acres of farmland that's enrolled in various municipal ASA areas across the, the county. So a lot going on with, with farming. Program funding, so far, you know, since the, you know, the start of the program, we've invested, you know, you know, it's a combination of state, county, and federal funding, a total of over $17 million. So it's something we put a lot of time and money into. The, the county's portion of the funding comes from a couple of key sources. One, we have interest off of the trust fund that was established through the Summit landfill. And then also, I don't know if those of you who might be familiar with the Clean and Green program that the state has, which basically taxes real estate that's eligible for farming or whatnot, at, at the agricultural rate rather than the market rate. When somebody violates Clean and Green, they get their taxes rolled back seven years. We don't get the taxes, but we do get the interest on those rollbacks. And so it, it'll vary from year to year, but, you know, I've had, you know, years when we've received as much as $18,000 in interest penalties that have, that have gone into the program through that, that particular funding source. Program responsibilities, you can see my, my rather long list here, and I've got basically into two different types of responsibilities, administrative, which was really sort of the ongoing stuff. We have landowner applications, which we accept every other year. We just got through our, our last application period in the summer of 2020. And every even year is when we accept applications. Our next one will be 2022. We always accept applications from June 1 through September 30. But during that period of time, you know, we get lots of questions. In fact, I, I get questions even, you know, when we're not in the application period. There seems like there's always people who are interested. And of course, it's, it's, it's a big deal. I mean, it's, it's, it's a commitment to these families and, you know, so, you know, they have lots of questions. You know, they do their due, due, due diligence. So there's a lot of that going on. It does take some time and effort to rank and score the applications. We usually get quite a few. This last time around, we got 22 eligible applications that we had to rank and score. Once we do all that, and once, you know, the farms are selected for preservation, then we also work to help facilitate the easement purchase process. That involves, you know, real estate appraisals. It involves contracting surveyors to do land surveys, dealing with attorneys who need to be doing the title work. Obviously, we need to negotiate the, the purchase price. My role in that is I'm sort of the guy in the middle, you know, between the landowner and the ag board. So I'm sort of, you know, running back and forth, you know, trying to negotiate those prices. And then last but not least, once we get all that together, then we have to submit a rather robust recommendation in the form of an application to the state. You know, and that's also something that, that I take care of on, on behalf of the ag board. And I've already mentioned the municipal assistance that we provide as part, you know, to municipalities relevant to their agricultural security areas. Farm stewardship is an ongoing thing. There's always, you know, compliance questions. Landowner will call me and say, hey, look, I've got the season, but, you know, what can I do? You know, can I do this? Can I do that? How do I do this? How do I do this or how do I do that? Sometimes they get, you know, prospective buyers, you know, hey, look, I'm interested in buying this farmland. I see it's preserved. What am I getting myself into? What can I do with it? Subdivision requests, not all county programs allow for subdivisions. Erie County does and has always done that. But it, it does have, you know, some requirements to it. You know, basically they have to subdivide in such a way that the resulting pieces would still qualify as a farm, having sufficient acreage and so forth, that it would still be viable. So we're not cutting up our farms into small pieces. They're still going to be viable agricultural uses. Ownership transferred and deed reviews, that's another thing where I'm constantly dealing with landowners and their attorneys as to, you know, what information needs to go into a, a deed that's recorded so that it's compliant with the, the, the deed that, that the agricultural easement is under. Annual monitoring inspections, we do that annually. All farms are inspected every other year, but there are some farms for various reasons that we're, that we are required to inspect every year. So we do that. So that involves, you know, landowner outreach and, you know, so forth and so on. So it's, it's, uh, there's a lot going on with, with the program. So that, that's it in a nutshell for the ag program. Does anybody have any, any questions on that?
Just a quick comment there, John. It appears, looking at that map that you showed, a lot of participation from Northeast Township. Am I right in reading that? It was the red color?
You are. It's, it's, uh, it's probably the most dense area of our, of our
Right, yeah.
Farms that we have.
Yeah, that really stood out.
Pardon me?
Really stood out, although there's, there's red everywhere throughout Erie County, you know, and but it's good to see that, you know, especially in the grape country there.
Yeah.
Hopefully that, you know, they're, they're, they're doing well with it and maybe we can encourage other farms here to do the same thing.
Yeah. I, I've always felt that, you know, the one thing that makes Erie County unique, you know, in agriculture is our grapes. And going back, I, I didn't, you know, I mentioned the agricultural census, you know, a few minutes ago, but, and I, I didn't see the most recent one, but I know, you know, not that long ago, we were actually number 18 nationally in grapes. So it's a big deal and not everybody has the soils. It's, it's a climate thing. And that's part of the reason why you see so much, you know, of the preservation happening in Northeast is, you know, A, we've got a bunch of landowners in that area who just happen to be interested in the program. That helps because you have to apply in order to be eligible. But the, the soils are really good and they score well. And so that helps on the scoring. And then I mentioned the clustering where you get farms that are beside each other. That's what we want to do. We want to, you know, get as many farms as close together as possible so that you get that critical mass that you need in order to make everything viable. So it's really taken off in Northeast, but if you notice the map, we're, we're doing a lot more now in Gerard. We've, we've done a lot as of late down in the, you know, the Wattsburg, you know, Amity, Wayne Township area. So things are picking up. We do make an effort to get around to all of the, you know, everywhere, you know, throughout the county. It's not that we favor one area or another, but at the same time, we have some very objective and stringent guidelines that we're bound to, to follow. So we don't have a whole lot of wiggle room.
Good. Good going there, yeah.
Yeah. Any, any other questions?
Lisa, hey, John.
Yeah.
John. Uh, I gotta tell you, we had a bus tour of the grape system out there with our planning commission officers about two or three years ago, and I was very impressed with it. And it was, they treated us like kings, I'll tell you. It was really impressive and very fine, and I hope someday we can do that again.
Yeah, it sounds like fun.
It was.
I, I don't ever get to go to meetings like that. I don't know what's going on with that.
It was a state.
You guys are all welcome in Northeast anyhow.
It was the, uh, it was the PPA meeting that we had here in Erie.
Oh, that's right. That's what that was. Yeah.
I know Chuck went with me on it. It was really good, really good. I mean, it wasn't just going to the winery. It was explaining the whole situation and where they were from years ago to where they are and how the environmental regulations have affected them. It was really, really, really interesting.
Yeah. Well, you know, we could, we could do that again here. Just send the bill to Russ LaFuria, right? Can't we do that?
I think we can do it again if John can send it up.
Yeah. I'll drive the bus, okay?
Okay, Jacob. I'll hook you guys up.
Okay. Good guy, Russ.
All right. You guys ready for presentation number two?
John, actually, I have a question. This is Lisa Austin.
Okay, Lisa, go ahead.
So first of all, I just want to say thank you very much for this presentation. It was really well organized and it's something that's so dense. I, I'm really looking forward to watching the recordings. So I appreciate that honeys are organizing that. And I was interested to hear that figure of 17 million is being invested in sort of the long-term vision for the county that way. I'm wondering, does that 17 million include the salaries affiliated with all of this work you've been doing and the lawyers and all that, or is that a separate amount?
It does not. There, there are no administrative costs that are allowed through, through the program. So my, you know, what I'm being paid is part of my salary and it's not all of my job, but that is not included in the 17 million. However, the 17 million does include the cost of, you know, professional fees. So when we hire out for real estate appraisers, land surveyors and attorneys to do the title work, that is included in that 17 million.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right. If there's no other questions, then we're going to move on to, to a program number two. Okay. Everybody see my screen still?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. The second program that I'm going to talk about tonight is the Erie County Municipal Plan.
I, I'm, did you share your screen for the new presentation? Cause we're, I'm not seeing it.
I'm not either.
All right. I didn't hit, I, I did not hit share screen. Again, I thought, I thought I didn't have to do that again. So let me, uh, okay, so now I can't get out of this. How do I?
Do you stop, stop screen? I think you must have stopped screen share previously because you weren't seeing your screen before and now you have to re-enable screen share again.
Thanks for letting me know.
There we are.
Okay.
Got it.
Except I think.
Yep, just close that one and then, yeah.
Thank God for Zoom, you know?
As much as I hate Zoom, I also recognize, you know, how valuable it is because, you know, it, it would be just so hard to get any work done. All right. Well, it magically opened up on slide number two. Oh, I gotta go into slideshow. That's what the problem is. Okay, here we go. Okay, so back to the beginning. The second thing I'm going to talk about here tonight is the Erie County Planning, Municipal Planning Assistance Program. Now, this is certainly not a, not an all-inclusive list of everything our department does. All of my coworkers have their own individual programs and they do lots of work, you know, assisting our municipalities as well. But my little niche, which we refer to as municipal planning assistance, is what we're going to be talking about right now. Here we go again. Okay. What is it? Basically, I would describe it as just, you know, professional consulting services. You know, we do work similar to any professional planning consultants that, you know, a municipality might, you know, be interested in hiring. We work solely upon request by municipality. They have to actually, you know, contact us and invite us for our help. We don't, you know, just force our way into, you know, some of these, these planning projects. We do this at no cost to, to the municipalities. We recognize that our municipalities, especially our smaller municipalities, are really struggling financially. And in, you know, in a lot of cases, you know, they wouldn't be able to do any planning if they had to actually go out and hire a consultant. So we do it at no cost. It is subject to our staff capacity. So we're sort of limited to some extent. By that, we can do maybe two or three big projects a year, but we just don't have the staffing, you know, to do more. But we try to do as much as possible. The types of projects that we do, we do comprehensive planning. We do zoning ordinances. We do subdivision and land development ordinances, or as we like to call them, SALDOs. And we also do official map ordinances, although today we actually haven't been asked to do one of those. But that would also be something that we would definitely be able to, to do. Why is all this important? Well, as a rule of thumb, municipal comprehensive plans should be reviewed and if not updated, you know, at a minimum of every 10 years. In fact, Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code basically states that, you know, well, first of all, municipalities are not obligated to have a comp plan, but if they do have a municipal comp plan, state law does require them to review their plan at a minimum of every 10 years. It doesn't require them to update that plan unless the plan is out of date. You know, so if they have a 30-year plan, but, you know, they check it out every 10 years and it's still current, they don't have to update it, but the chances of it staying current for that long is, is pretty slim. But you can see, we've got only eight, eight of our 38 municipalities that actually have comp plans that are 10 years or less, while, you know, that big ugly yellow splotch of the 30-year plus is, you know, sitting at nine. So we've got our work to cut out for us. Now, out of that eight, I'm glad to say, you know, we have actually, we've actually done two of those, two out of the eight. So we're making things better. And we're, we've also participated, and then out of the eight, we've also participated in or helped with three of those within the past few years. So I'd like to take credit for, you know, or at least partial credit for five of those eight. So it's, this chart, believe me, when we sort of started this program or got it started back, back in 2016, and believe me, these charts were looking way, way worse, you know, back then. And they still look bad to me, but they're, they're getting better. Municipal zoning ordinances, there again, you know, it's looking sort of ugly. I would argue that zoning ordinances might be even more important to keep up date than the comprehensive plans just because they're, they're used so much. State and federal laws are constantly changing. Best management practices are constantly changing and updating. There's new uses and new technologies coming out all the time. Just over the past year, I mean, I'm thinking of medical marijuana. I'm thinking of solar farms. I'm thinking all of the new cellular technology with the small wireless communications facilities. There's just so much going on. So it's really important for these ordinances to stay up to date. And again, you know, you're looking at, you know, only eight of them that are less than 10 years old. And would you believe, we've actually done five of those, five of the eight. And out of those five, I, I think four of them were sitting in that big ugly yellow splotch where it's now down to eight. I think the other one was in the 20 to 29-year range. So again, you know, we're having an impact, but as you can see, we still got a long ways to go. Why is it so hard? I've, I've already sort of mentioned the money. You know, it's, it's, it amazes me how much some of these things cost. We were working with Corey a little bit just last year. They put out an RFP. They were interested in doing a comprehensive plan and they got about a half a dozen responses. I think the lowest response was $75,000 and the highest was about $110,000. That's, that gives you a pretty good idea right there. I can tell you that Summit, when they did their most recent comprehensive plan, they paid 90 grand. And those are just what you would call, you know, the typical municipalities. Then you get, you know, your Mill Creek Township, they, that was like $200,000 and I think the city of Erie paid even more for theirs. But they're, you know, they're sort of, you know, they're, they're not really the same as most of our other smaller municipalities. But generally speaking, you're looking at, you know, 75 to $100,000, you know, for a comprehensive plan. Zoning ordinances, I don't have a whole lot of data on that, but I know Summit is in the process of just finishing up their newest zoning ordinance. They hired a consultant out of Pittsburgh and the bill for that was $90,000. So it's, it's a lot of money. It's expensive. And when you have a small municipality with, you know, just a few thousand or less, you know, residents, you know, where does the money come from? So it's a big deal and that's why, you know, we made this program available at no cost to our Erie County municipalities. In addition to that, a lot of our smaller municipalities, you know, even if, you know, they just don't have the capacity. I mean, they don't even have enough time to actually put together an RFP. I mean, we're talking, you know, part-time staff. Maybe, you know, maybe they have a zoning officer who works, you know, two hours, you know, on a Monday night, you know, or something like that. It's, it's, it's a different world out there. You know, they just, they don't have the capacity of some of our larger municipalities. And this goes without saying, you know, just because of their situation, they don't have, you know, necessarily have the technical knowledge and the training to go it alone. So it's a service I think, you know, is needed. What, what actually do we provide? It's, it's a full range of services because, you know, one size doesn't fit all. We do everything from, you know, the full consulting services, which is really doing the whole project, start to finish and taking care of all the details, you know, everything from, you know, management and facilitation, all the meetings, all the, you know, the consulting work, all the GIS, all the research, writing the plan and then, you know, guiding them through the adoption process, everything, start to finish. But then again, not all municipalities need that. I mentioned, you know, out of the, you know, the eight new comp plans, you know, we've actually helped, you know, with three of them. We did two of them all, you know, ourselves, but we, we helped with the other three. You know, and on those three, we actually sat on advisory committees, you know, at the invitation of the municipalities. And then with respect to Mill Creek, not only did we do that, but that's where this picture is from. We actually in advance, before they put out their RFP, the municipality wanted to have, you know, some public outreach to actually sort of get some insight into what types of things their interests, their, their residents were interested in. So we actually had a series of four public meetings that we had held at the schools, public schools, you know, throughout Mill Creek, where we got some public, you know, information and that helped to inform the municipality so that they could actually put together their RFP and, and sort of tailor it to what their needs were. And, you know, it really worked out well for them. But we've, we've do that. GIS support, you know, those of you who know me, I'm, I'm not a computer guy, but I'm not the only person, you know, at our, at our office. And we have some really great folks who are able to provide, you know, GIS support for municipal projects. And then, you know, you know, reviews of draft plans and ordinances, you know, just because we haven't been in, involved in a project, you know, still, somebody sends us something to look at and comment on. We'll usually make an effort, you know, to do so. So that's sort of in a nutshell, you know, the, the range of our services. But it could be anything. I mean, we're, we're always open-minded, you know, to whatever requests, you know, may come our way. Projects completed just in the, in the past four years. And we really sort of got this, you know, really wound up and started back in 2016. Historically, we did it, you know, decades ago and then for whatever reason, I think we got away from it probably, you know, 2005 or so for a period of time, whether it was, you know, staff capacity or, or what have you. I don't know the, the reason. But since we really sort of got back into it in a big way in 2016, we've, we've, as I've mentioned, two, two comprehensive plans. One of them, we did in Albion Borough, which I'm proud to say actually won an APA award for being one of the best plans in the state. Last year, we finished up Green Township. They adopted their plan in August. Five municipal zoning ordinances that we've, we've done, you know, since 2016. We've done, we've done two municipal subdivision and land development ordinances. And then, you know, I've mentioned the advisory roles, you know, they're not the full job, but there's still a lot of time committed, time commitment. And I think there's a lot of value to, to our participation on, on some of those projects. Erie Refocused, Embrace Mill Creek, you know, and those types of things. Numerous supporting projects. Just last month, I think it was last month, time, time is flying. We just finished up helping Union Township. They wanted to do a zoning amendment, you know, for a small wireless and also solar energy. So we helped them with that. And, you know, just, you know, numerous phone calls. I constantly get phone calls of, oh, hey, you know, we got a landowner who wants to do this. You know, what do you think? Or how can we, you know, how can we do that? Or can we do that? So we're constantly getting those types of things. So again, it's, you know, the big stuff, the little stuff and everything pretty much, you know, in between. What's coming up next? Well, currently we're working with Green Township and we're trying to put the finishing touches on a new zoning ordinance. Which is going to help to implement their, their comprehensive plan. Green Township incidentally really is big on, you know, they want to keep the rural areas rural, they want to keep the suburban areas suburban. They want to, you know, do something with developing Route Eight in a responsible way. So it's, it's a lot of land use related type of stuff. So the zoning and the subdivision ordinance that we're doing for them are really going to be key pieces to the implementation of their plan. And in fact, the zoning, and I'm really excited about this, they're actually taking a serious path at conservation subdivision design in, in their zoning. And I think it's going to work, you know, and, and they're, at this point, the plan is to make it, you know, a requirement for the large subdivisions. None more of this, you know, voluntary stuff where nobody's going to volunteer. They're really taking it seriously, so I'm excited about it. And it's, it's written in a, in a very reasonable and fair way. I think it's going to work out good for them. So I was hoping to finish those up. Inevitably, it's going to take some time. I think they'll be pretty much wrapped up by the end of spring, but then, you know, we all know that, you know, that how slow the state's mandated adoption process takes. So it'll probably be, you know, midsummer-ish before they actually get adopted. In the meantime, hopefully, you know, probably, you know, sometime in the spring, early summer at the latest, we're really going to jump on our next big project. This is working with a northeast area. And this is something that Honey and I are really, really excited about. This will be, you know, our first multi-municipal planning effort that we're taking on as part of this program. You know, again, since this, you know, gotten, you know, revved back up in 2016, but Northeast Township, Northeast Borough, both approached us. Both were interested in having a comprehensive plan and they were agreeable to working again, you know, together. They currently have a, a plan, so I'm really excited about it. Honey and I have met with them a couple of times, it's, it's a great group. I think they have, you know, a lot of enthusiasm, seems like they have a lot of planning support in the form of, you know, private, the private sector, the nonprofit sector, folks that they're dealing with out there. So I think, I think, A, I think it's going to be a fun project, B, I think it's going to be a productive project. And I think it's going to, you know, hopefully ultimately do, do well for them. And, you know, and others, you know, who knows? Every, every day I come into work and sometimes I get surprised that, you know, what gets thrown on my plate. So that's what's going on and that, I guess, is pretty much it and an upshell. So I'm going to stop my screen share and take any questions that you might have.
Lisa, John, I was very interested in your statement that sometimes revamping the zoning ordinance is a higher priority than necessarily a comprehensive plan. Could you elaborate?
Well, like I said, you know, the zoning, I mean, the zoning, first of all, zoning is legislation, so it's going to be used, you know, I mean, it's, it's the law. So it's important to have it right. And, you know, state and federal laws are constantly changing. You know, court cases could impact how a municipality regulates signs. Back in late 2018, the FCC put out a ruling on, on the new, you know, small wireless. Which really put a, you know, monkey wrench into some of the existing small wireless facilities regulations that municipalities had. So all that stuff needs to be kept current, you know, or you're going to end up, you know, in court and bad things are going to happen. So that's why it's so important. Now, when we do updates for the zoning, if it's something that's going to impact the comp plan or whatnot. What we'll do is we'll typically simultaneously update whatever portion of their comp plan needs to be updated. So that's still consistent and supportive of the zoning, because the two really do work together. The, the whole purpose of the zoning really is to implement the plan of the municipality. So, you know, they go together and then, and then, you know, the comp plan, you know, provides sort of the legal backing for the zoning. So it's important for them to be consistent, but yeah, I mean, if, if I were to have to, you know, make a choice of what I thought was more important. Just because the, you know, the one's just a plan and the other one's actual legislation, I would lean towards the zoning.
You know, it's interesting the way, I thank you so much for that clarification, John, because it echoes what I heard Autumn Parker saying earlier. About this undesigned the red line and the idea that we can have these great plans for changing our community and, and, you know, becoming more inclusive. But unless we have policy legislation, you know, it's, it's kind of like the plan, right? It's a plan, but it's, there's nothing enforcing it. I wanted to also just comment that I spent some time on the zoning hearing board for the city of Erie. And I saw over and over again, the carefully planned code be sort of tattered by the variance after variance after variance. And so just wondering if there's any, I'm interested in you, if you have any thoughts on the qualifications for people who serve on the, on the zoning hearing boards? And or some other way to educate the members so that they don't undo the good work of the zoning? And then lastly, just if you know anything about or have any comments on the, what is happening in Buffalo with the, with the, what is it called? The, it's, it's the, I forget the name of it now, but it's, it's, it's the form-based, form-based zoning rather than use-based. Anyway, those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, so it's a lot of questions and I have a short memory, so I'm going to do the best I can, but you may have to remind me. So what was the first one about the, the variances in the city?
What can we do when you go to all this trouble to do zoning and then you get people that meet well, but they're unzoning the zoning?
Okay, my, my first comment about the variances is this, if you're getting a lot of variances. That tells me that you might be ready for an update to your zoning, because, you know, if you're having, you're not going to have a lot of variances if your zoning is working for you. It's when it's not working for you, you know, that, that you might want to take a second look at it. So that's really important. And then you're right, you know, and it drives me crazy when people go and they get a variance and essentially, you know, careful plans and careful legislation gets sort of, you know, overwritten, so to speak. You know, not by the legislative body, but, you know, by, by the zoning hearing board. Technically speaking, you know, there's like five criteria that have to apply, you know, before they can legally grant a variance. It all has to do with hardship. I, I'd have to look them up.
Yeah, those are regularly flouted.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, that is state law. So, you know, if it is being flouted and it's causing somebody, you know, damage, I would say that they may want to consider court action. I think that that would be legitimate. That, that's, you know, something, somebody would have to push it that way, but I think that they would have a strong case if, you know, they can make a case that that is not. Because that's what, that's what the state law says. And also virtually every zoning ordinance I've ever seen, you know, where it says how to do a variance, it's, it's copying from the state law. So, you know, it's very clear that, you know, it's not just what they, you know, what the zoning hearing board wants to do. There's, you know, it's got to be hardship, you know, it can't be something that, you know, the owner self-created, it can't be self-imposed hardship. It can only be the minimum relief, you know, it can't be more than that. So there's all these criteria and, you know, they should be doing that.
Well, I just want to comment and say that it should be and what they're supposed to be doing is very different than what happens. There are no consequences. Who's going to sue the, you know, it's, it's just too much money, time and energy. So since there is nobody making sure the rules are being followed, they're not.
Yeah, I, I share your pain, believe me, it's, it drives me crazy and, and I understand it. Now, I do know, you know, I've already mentioned, you know, how hard it is, you know, on some of these, you know, not some, not the city of Erie. I don't think the city of Erie is a good example necessarily, but, you know, a lot of the smaller communities, they don't have the wherewithal. They don't have the ability to train, they don't have, you know, the staffing. The city of Erie, you know, is different, you know, and I, you know, I would suggest that, you know, they should, you know, have, you know, maybe some training. I mean, they've got, you know, some planning staff in the city. I know through the, you know, the COG, Jessica, you know, works out of our office. I know in the past, the COG has sponsored training for both, you know, zoning hearing board as well as planning commission members. You know, and those types of trainings, you know, when they're available. And I, and I see John nodding and I can't remember the name of the. I'll give John at the floor here, he's, he's, he's the training guru for. Yeah, go ahead, John. You're better to answer this question than me.
I'll be real quick here. Training is the best thing to do and I will give a shameless plug for the organization I teach for. Which is called the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Education Institute. We are a joint effort between Penn State University and the Pennsylvania Association of Boroughs. And I've been an instructor with them, I'm on my 21st year now. And, but we offer a full line of courses. Zoning is one of them, another one is zoning hearing boards, so there's two different ones. And these, these courses are available. If Erie County Planning Department wanted to sponsor a course, we would be more than willing and more than happy to, to offer that. You know, I can talk with Honey at a later, at another time about that, not to put you on the spot there, Honey, but, you know, judging by your reaction, I might be, but we can get together, talk about that and see if it's, if it's viable, if it's something that could be done. But anyway, it's, it's a long story and Lisa had some really good valid points there. And I understand her frustration, because I used to work at the city and I can see that stuff as, you know, when I was a zoning officer there, it's like, wow. You know, there's no hardship yet they're being granted a rubber stamp, so anyway, I'm done.
But just, just to add to this board, I'd like to add that it's something that we should look at. I know it's been a few years since we've offered it. You know, we've gone a whole year with this COVID stuff and not been doing anything, but hopefully maybe late this summer or this next winter, we can. Honey, you could sponsor something and have it again, because I know in the past, throughout the years, the county has done that quite often.
That's right.
The other municipalities, it's a great thing for all municipalities, can't encourage it enough. Then John is our teacher. It's awesome.
Yeah, Jessica Heran Kuntso and I of the CLOG have been periodically will bring that up as a, as a joint effort.
Yeah, okay. There are, there are training opportunities.
All right, so, so even though my memory is short, I think Lisa had one other question with respect to, you know.
My memory's short, I can't remember it.
It was form-based zoning in Buffalo.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly familiar, you know, with what Buffalo, you know, has done. I am familiar a little bit with, with form-based zoning. It's not something that we've really done a lot with here, because again, I'm working with municipalities that, you know, just, I mean, they have trouble with the simple stuff. You know, let alone something that's a little bit more complex. That being said, I mean, we're trying to do a lot of, you know, innovative things that are sort of, you know, getting away from that Euclidean style zoning. You know, we're trying to, I always try to advocate for a lot more, you know, mixed use and a lot of, you know, things like that. So, you know, baby steps, but the, you know, the more extensive form-based zoning, that would be good for, you know, a municipality that had the capacity, you know, to do something like that. City of Erie, I think, has the capacity to do something like that if they, if they were so inclined, possibly Mill Creek. But beyond that, I think municipalities are just so small that I don't know that, that the capacity is there.
Well, I just wanted to jump in and say, maybe we could get John on, have a conversation about this, because one of the things I do know about it is that form-based is actually easier than other, other. It has fewer limitations because it's focused on the shapes rather than the uses. And so a lot of the zoning codes were designed to separate, you know, commercial from industrial, from educational, from shopping, from all of that. And we're finding that to a large degree into reintegrating those the way the cities normally were built and small villages and so on. You know, not for everything, but anyway, what I'm saying is, I think it's something we should maybe look at on the planning commission level. To see if it's down the road, something we can kind of encourage, because we're continuing to see zoning that's driving, you know, parking lots as a priority. And, you know, in places that don't really need the parking lots, where people could walk, you know, or, you know what I mean? So it's, anyway, thank you and I'll stop.
Any, any other questions from anybody? Alrighty, that's, that's a wrap then, I guess. Thanks for putting up with me, although I guess I'm here at your request.
You are. Thank you so much, John. That was, as always, just such an impressive presentation. So I do appreciate it. Glad to have, I am very glad to have John on our team, if I haven't told you all that before, but I think I have. Yeah, so, Charles, all I have are just a couple of real quick updates and then we can move into commissioner reports. We have been working with county council, we're in the final moments of getting CPACE approved, which is commercial property assessed clean energy. There's a resolution that county council will hopefully approve at their first March meeting. We're just kind of finalizing the resolution language and some tri-party agreements. And if this all seems very foreign to you, do not worry, I will provide or have an overview provided to you at a future meeting. We'll bring in our environmental coordinator, sustainability coordinator to provide an overview of CPACE. Because she has really been the one leading this effort across many departments in the county. It's taken quite a bit of time to get many cooks in the kitchen all cooking the same dish. But we're close, so that will be a future educational segment for you all, just so you're aware of what that will entail. There are several building projects in the city of Erie that are eagerly awaiting this resolution, because it will allow them to put in perhaps solar panels or high efficiency HVAC or some of those types of things. But not necessarily have to incur the cost of those types of things upfront. They can spread it out over a number of years and that payment will be included in their tax, tax bill. But I don't want to go too deep into the, into the details, but just know that, that, that is close to coming to fruition. One of the other things to report is we received a grant award in the amount of $10,000 from DCNR for a peer-to-peer review to facilitate an assessment of the resources that are needed to create the Parks and Recreation Coordinator position that will help towards the implementation of the Parks Trails and Recreation Plan. We just received notice, it was a couple of weeks ago that we received that award. So we'll start working on that, working with a consultant to help figure out how do we sustainably fund the coordinator position? But also the Parks Trails and Recreation Plan, if you all recall. About this time last year, this was laid before you and we deemed it, oh, highly questionable. And then John McGrainer, who has joined us this evening, as well as some staff in our department. Put a lot of time into a major rewrite that we are all much happier with, it's much more actionable. So we're really excited because that's another key step into actually making things happen with that plan. That's all I have.
Okay.
Charles, you may need to, I, we were getting some background noise and I had Laura just put everyone on mute. You may need to re unmute yourself and I'm trying to recall what that is on a, on a phone. I think is it a, is it a star six? To unmute? Because once we mute you, we can't unmute you. You have to do that.
You there Chuck?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can. Okay, we're on 7B.
We're on to 6B, old business, adoption of the ballads, which you know our table, so move on from that.
Nope, we're actually on to commissioner report. Nope, we're actually on to commissioner reports. If you recall. Yep, I gave my report, but now you all need to give your report. As you recall, we talked about brief comments regarding what's maybe happening in your district for those of you that represent a specific council district. So it's up to you, Charles, I guess, on how you want to initiate the reports.
Well, does anybody have a idea of what their, their district is trying to do or planning wise and if they would like to give us a presentation, we would be glad to hear it.
Charles, this is Matt. I did, yep, yeah, I have one I threw together here for, for Mill Creek Township real quick, just some quick updates. Township is currently accepting applications for a small business relief loan program, which is to provide no interest loans up to $25,000 to help cover up to three months of lease and mortgage and utilities for small Mill Creek businesses. The deadline for that is tomorrow and we will try and award those on February 19th. And you can apply for those through the Erie County Redevelopment Authority at ecrda.net. If you know of anybody who might be interested and can get their application in by the end of the day tomorrow. Another thing we're doing is we are working with the county and PennDOT through the MPO to participate in a study of two intersections along Route 505. You have Bollwood Park Avenue where it meets Young Road, Evans Road and Old Bollwood Park, and then also 97. These are part of a study that was designated in the county's long-range transportation plan. We're paying 20%, meaning the township is paying 20% of the $50,000 study. 80% is coming from the MPO through the Unified Planning Work Program. It will recommend safety improvements that can be added to the tip for future funding through the MPO for that intersection. But the township has also asked a consultant to come up with something that might be implementable by the township on their local roads to try and improve some of the safety issues that go on at those intersections prior to some, you know, some future large-scale safety improvement done by PennDOT. I guess I'll, two more quick ones. One, we have designated the recipient of our second round of CDBG CARES Act funding. That money will go to GCAC. They'll receive $375,000 and they'll be providing rent, mortgage and utility assistance for low to moderate income township residents that have been affected by, you know, the economic impacts of the pandemic. This, this money follows the first round of CARES Act funding, which we distributed to the Second Harvest Food Bank, Meals on Wheels and to the HVA Senior Alliance, who is going to train nurses aides to help out with, you know, COVID patients. And then lastly, real quick, the township is, actually I guess this is a two-parter. We are working on our zoning ordinance in Saldau for adoption later this year. And we're also working right now on the adoption of an official map. We just sent letters out to all of the property owners that are potentially affected by the, you know, by impacts of the map. And we are going to be holding an open house on March 11th for anybody to come in, view the map and get any other questions answered. So that's my update for the month.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Okay.
How about, how about Russia Northeast? Anything?
Well, I would like to say something in support of what John told us about on, on our comprehensive plan. We are looking forward to working with John and Honey. As zoning administrator out here, I see things are changing in the farm industry, whether you know it or not. Our farms are getting, our farmers are getting older and we're getting larger farm, farm, farmers' ownerships. There's fewer farmers owning more land. And we've gotten a lot of, I know, John, you probably noticed that a lot of the guys are trying to figure out how they can subdivide their properties. I've been getting a lot of questions out here about that. So this new comprehensive plan couldn't come at a better time with what's going on with the great industry. Basically what I wanted to tell you all. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. How about Jim Cardman from Fairview? Anything, Jim?
Yes, I do. Thanks. Currently, just to let everybody know, we are about part, partway through our downtown plan within Fairview Township. We've hired CT Consulting out of Cleveland. They're writing us a new downtown plan so we can apply for some future transportation money to try and do some upgrades within the downtown as far as widening of Route, US Route 20, sidewalks, new infrastructure, all those kinds of things, along with adopting a a new zone, some new regulations within our zoning ordinance dealing with a downtown district. We're also in the process of consulting with CT to do a new comprehensive plan. And I just want to mention, even, even after you've been at this for 35 years, I still have to call these younger guys and I called John just yesterday to ask him some questions about the MPC and about whether zoning ordinances are versus zoning amendments versus map changes versus rezoning. So John had some great insight for me and we still, we still use guys a lot for that. So thanks, John. And then the only other thing I have to add is I would talk a little bit about the Erie County Land Bank. I'll give a report on that. We are currently obtaining properties through the tax sale. We are working diligently in Corey, Northeast, Fairview and, and we did some nice work in Albion and some demolition and cleanup in Union City. So we're currently taking applications and always looking for new projects. So if you have some interest within your community about removing blight, please get ahold of Kristi Mahaney at the County Planning Office. And that's what I got, Chuck.
Okay, I thank you, Jim. That was very interesting. Your, your programs are really interesting. How about John? You got anything more to add?
Charles, we've, we are missing District Two, District Three. If you want to give an update on District Four, I don't know if the city of Erie, if you all talked about how you're going to present information for the city. We have no one for District Six.
It's really tough for this, for us from the city because it's to plan, we have our own planning commission and sometimes I can't get to, get to those. I get to one or two of them, but I can't get to all of them and, and it's a little, little difficult. I don't know, maybe Lisa could or Don Crenshaw could do an update on that. I have no idea.
Lisa or Don, do you have anything you want to share in regards to?
Yes, I, I, but I defer, does, who was the other person you were mentioning?
Don Crenshaw. You all split. So District Two, Three and Four, which is represented by you, Lisa, Don and Charles, it's an, it's a sticky wicket because you're all of the city.
And I have a presentation for District Two. But right now I'm having a, I'm gonna have, if, if, just give me a.
Okay. I don't know while Lisa is, while Lisa's dealing with her presentation, if anyone has anything else, any of the other commission members have anything else they want to share?
This is Paul. I've got it.
Oh, okay. Never mind, Paul. You go, Paul.
Hey, yeah, I got a comment because you talked about District Seven and you asked Jim, but District Seven includes the whole West County. From Fairview to the Ohio line. And one of the things Gerard got dumped on and wasn't expected or prepared for is a 250-acre solar farm right on Route 20. And obviously there was nothing, we had nothing in our zoning or anything about that because nobody was even thinking about that. But that's pretty much, they came to the planning commission, they brought books in from the things that they had a potential agreement with the owner already to do this. So, and what all do you do about it? And I don't know how, if anybody else out there has rural, rural ground in particular that they might be interested in looking at that, that that's coming.
About three or four years ago, Paul, we went, we did an amendment to our zoning ordinance and, you know, we knew these were coming. And we started talking about how we wanted to deal with them. We deal with, with solar farms, just like we would deal with a windmill farm or like we would deal with a cell tower. We, we permit all of those things in our industrial districts as a principal use. We have the same restrictions on those that we would have with any other use to keep it compatible and not not different than any other manufacturing facility. Basically what they're doing is manufacturing energy. And they sell it back to the grid.
And the big thing is though that the big thing is, is they typically look for rural areas because of large open space and that's going to be in your ag districts.
I understand that, but you can have industrial land that's, that's in an agriculture, you know, that looks like it's in a rural setting. It's vacant. And, and so that's what we did with ours. And just to let everybody know, we, we just won in the state Supreme Court a cell tower challenge with blue wireless. This, our cell tower regulations were written through county planning years ago in 1998. Tom DeBello was, was a planner at Erie County Planning and he kept, helped us develop cell tower regulations. And we did a little, a few small amendments to that section dealing with the heights of towers and land development regulations and other things that were added to it. But that ordinance still held up some 20 years later in the state Supreme Court. So I was pretty proud of that. And that's the way we deal with them. We deal with cell towers. We deal with, with solar panels and windmills, all as a principal industrial use. And it worked for us and I don't, I don't foresee us changing it. You know, we, we've had some questions about people wanting to do solar fields. Just a couple of weeks ago, another one on Route 20 happens to be in an industrial district. It, it probably could go in, in, in a certain area. But they have to get the cell tower off the land on its own lot because we allow one principal use per lot. So I think with some subdividing, it could work, but we, we also have had some inquiries about solar fields and solar manufacturing.
Yeah, because that, I'm just bringing it up because it looks like this is going to be a coming thing now that they're going to be pushing.
It is. It is. And you got to be prepared for it. I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I can.
I'd be glad to share with our, our, our regulations and how we wrote them. I don't know that they're exactly right because we don't have any solar fields yet, but I know we went on the cell tower thing, which I, I was very proud of. And I don't know. We'll gladly share our ideas with you.
I don't know if county has any thought on that, whether they should be permitted or not.
I'm sure John has some stuff.
Well, you, you've probably noticed I've taken myself off of mute. But yeah, we, we do have model regulations available for both the solar as well as the small wireless. The small wireless, as I mentioned during one of my, my presentations, we just got done assisting Union Township with an update to their, you know, zoning for both, you know, both the solar and also small wireless. I'm a little bit surprised that your, your cell tower thing held up because of the FCC rulings and some of the other more recent changes. But, but it, you know, magic happens sometimes. But yeah, those are two issues where, you know, you definitely want to stay on top of things. I actually got contacted by a zoning officer within, oh, it's time, time escapes me. So it's, it may be a month ago now, but I heard 600 acres down around, you know, the Wattsburg area down around there. So there was some potential interest. I don't know that an actual application was, was filed yet, but you know, I just about fell out of my chair because I, you know, you know, you think of these big, you know, projects, but I'd never thought of 600 acres for a solar farm.
Can I make just a quick comment here? And this is from a historical standpoint, from what I know from history when I was old. It's ironic that Erie County is being selected for these solar farms. For those who may not know this, and this is where the history comes in, that when Eastern Kodak Company was looking for a place to locate their plant because they needed to have a place with the least amount of sunlight per year, we were beat out by Rochester, New York. Erie was the place seriously that was going to be used because we didn't get that much sunlight.
I know.
It was going to ruin the film.
But what we, but what we got, John, and this is what I was told, just to let you know, we got a lot of flat land. Flat land is huge. We have flat, open land. Along lake shore and lakefront properties, we have this large expanses of wide open flat land. And that is huge to them. But I agree, the sun doesn't shine enough.
It was shining today. Okay.
It was good.
It was good.
Clean all the snow off those solar panels.
I thought I read something about.
This is Lisa with, with a request for, to ask one more question from John.
Okay.
So, so John, I've been noticing on Route Six, Edinburgh, like watching it, you know, very carefully the past, the past 20 years because I drive by it so much. And, and it's, it's really so sad what's happening, the development there, the way it's sort of pulling off, you know, pulling business out of the downtown and creating sort of a little mini Peach Street along Sixth End there from 79 to like where 99 is. And, and, and it, and it, part of it, it's like there's, you know, they keep building one more thing. So there's one more intersection and there's no, there's no street grid, right? Everybody has to kind of keep and the people on Sixth End want to go fast and the other people want, anyway, I'm just, it just seems like there's the same thing that we were talking about with the farms. It's like there's this, there's such a press to do something and sell the land and make money off of it. And, and I, I know that your focus is on the farmland, but it seems like, I mean, Edinburgh certainly would have been better off if the development, the Walmart and all that kind of stuff was further down, you know, in the downtown, you know. So I just, I mean, it's too late now, but I mean, I just wonder, is there a sense at the county's level, you know, in all of Northwest Pennsylvania, are people cognizant of the need to like not keep using new land? You know, when you've got plenty of land that's already developed somewhere else, it just needs to be redeveloped?
It just, I, I think it depends on where you go. I can tell you, you know, I was really very, it was refreshing to work with Green Township because they were the first municipality that I've dealt with in a long time that actually said, you know, we don't really care if we get development. We just want to make sure that our community stays the way we want it. You know, they like the rural atmosphere. They like the green. If they, if they want, if they're going to get development, they want the right kind of development. As I mentioned, you know, they're the first ones are really stepping up and saying, hey, look, you know, we, we believe in conservation subdivision design. That's what we want. And, and you know, none of this volunteer stuff, we're going to require it. But they're, you know, they're not like all the other ones. I've, I've also dealt with a lot of, you know, some of our rural municipalities down in, you know, the southern part of, of Erie County. And they're, you know, dying for any kind of development and they're afraid to regulate for fear that they're going to chase development away. So it's just, it just depends on who you talk to and where you go and it's, it's, it's really fascinating, you know, how things differ politically, even within our own, you know, county, which really isn't that big. even within our own, you know, county, which really isn't that big. Uh, it's just, you know, so it's, uh, everywhere you go is a little bit different. So.
You know, you know, Lisa, uh, John Groves here, he could probably speak a little bit about Edinburgh Borough, but I, I would say the reason that the, the development didn't take place down there is primarily probably because the transportation issue within the downtown of Edinburgh. I don't know, John, speak on it.
Yeah, that, that, that is correct there, the transportation issue there. Uh, and I could just say, just one quick, a little quip about the, the Sixth N corridor. It's amazing that there was any agreement between Washington Township and the Borough of Edinburgh. Uh, because you talk about, at least at that time, I'm not saying how it is now, I understand there's new councils in both municipalities. Uh, but my observation at that time, from my time of employment, oh eight until end of oh thirteen, it, it was very, a lot of animosity between those two municipalities. And it's amazing they had a joint comp plan that would allow anything. Uh, granted, Washington Township is reaping a lot of that, that stuff out of that. It may not be what we call desirable. Uh, keep in mind, you have the hotel property where the golf course was at, and that was owned by the Travellini Estate. Uh, and they, or I guess, they owed taxes on the estate and so on, they had to sell off land. This is what's gonna be a little mini Peach Street, sorry to say, but, uh, the borough itself, uh, wants to be a sleepy little hamlet. Um, they want to be a bedroom town, is what they want to be. And they actually, at one time, were trying to drive the university out of there too. You know, that was under, when I was there, that was the direction that, uh, certain leaders were heading to. Uh, if they could drive Edinburgh University out, they would, but they're, they're, they don't have much success on it, but just making bad relations. So, that's my view, okay? I'm just telling you, gut feeling.
By the transportation, what was that, you started off with that, I don't know what you mean by that.
Well, it, you know, the whole, the transportation system down there on Route Six N, or Route Six, they're right in, in the borough. It's, uh, uh, it's very tight. Um, there's really no land to put a Walmart, as we know. Uh, you know, you got the Culbertson Hills, or the old hotel next to the Culbertson Hills Golf Course, that isn't enough land. However, so it'll be change gears a little bit, you look at the old Agway, look what that's become. I was just down that area there about two weeks ago. Um, wow, what amazing, how amazing that has turned around. Uh, you know, Agway moved out when the tractor supply moved in, uh, just up the street. So, uh, it was bound to happen. Uh, but to find a, this thing being reused and repurposed, that is really something else. So, uh.
I think, and I think Lisa, one of the things that I noticed, being a, an Edinburgh grad from years ago, is, um, you, it's like John said, there's really no place downtown to put a Walmart. But even if you, if you use the Culbertson area and you were to put a Walmart in there, it just congests that downtown so much more that people wouldn't want to go to that Walmart.
That's right.
So, so the key is, is Walmart choose, chose where they wanted to be. And Washington Township had the availability for it, so they bid it. And that's the way it's happened.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
If there's anybody else would like to speak?
I will just make mention, unless Jeannie, you would like to speak about the, um, downtown Gerard Plan, um, that we are assisting with that as well. Hope you're on mute.
She's there now.
Okay, there we go. All right, you go right ahead. I got my pa- I got my papers out just in case, but you go ahead.
No, I just wanted to make mention, so this group was aware that you all are doing a downtown master plan for the borough, um, and you have, I mean, you, what are we on, survey now? The survey just went out.
Went out today, yeah.
Mm-hmm, on that, I'm, I've agreed to attend, uh, the Thursday meetings, um, to help guide that. And John, uh, McGriner will kind of be doing a little behind the scenes reviewing of documents when they, they come about. So, you know, it's just like John talked about, the assisting, um, of, of these things, you know, we're, we're also, we're, we're into that now with, with Gerard Borough. So, I don't know if you want to speak, you're more knowledgeable about it, I'm just getting involved with it. You, you've been involved since the beginning.
Well, the only thing, we're, we're doing the master plan, we signed a contract, uh, with a group out of Buffalo, just doing, you know, the survey and all that right now. They're also gonna be doing, uh, to work on a nomination for the historical, for the national, uh, historicals at the same time that we're working on that. And, um, our grants on this came from the gaming revenue and from the Pennsylvania historical, as far as doing those two things. But anyways, yes, the survey went out, uh, today, uh, for the residents to tell us what they think of, what they think of the town of Gerard, and what we can do to improve it, uh, to take in. And we hope to have, you know, open meetings, uh, to the public later on. But that's where we're at on that. And then on to Jim, as far as the land bank on the, um, Gerard Hotel. Um, right now, uh, she, it, it was donated, the, the owner did donate it to the land bank. And right now, it's what Habitat for Humanity is coming in and taking out, she has to, they have until the end of the month to take out what they want out of the building. And the plans are to have it down in June. But we've put in, the Borough of Gerard has already told her that we would like to have bricks, like for the back part of the building, to try and make it into a mini park, uh, where the hotel was at. And then we're gonna try to work with Pendot on that corner to widen it or something, because by the time the trucks come around that corner, every time, we do not have any sidewalks. If you try to fix it, they're gonna take care of it. So, anyways, that's what the plans are, and hope to have it down in June. So, that's what Gerard's doing right now. And that's it. Anybody else? I think Lisa still has something she wants to say.
Um, she, she deferred to next month. You probably didn't see that. Yeah, she deferred to next month.
Paul, got anything else to add? Apparently not. Well, uh, uh, Lacy is with the city of Erie, she, Lacy, do you have anything?
It looks like she's dropped off the call.
Okay, then, Paul.
So, if her husband was working and she was home with the littles, it's probably time for them to go to bed.
And Cindy Wells is not with us, is she?
Not tonight, no.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we could, uh, go on to, uh, the next agenda, which is all business, the adoption of bylaws, which is still tabled, I imagine, according to my letter here.
It is. The council, the council is reviewing the administrative code, so just stay tuned.
Okay.
Then we go back to, uh, new business, which is the election of commission chairman. Or chairperson. Does anybody want to make a motion to elect the chairman?
I'll, I'll make a motion to elect, uh, Charles Casey as chair.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that motion. This is Paul.
Uh, being it's, uh, the motion is up and near, it's been seconded, is there anybody that would like to approve it?
I'll appro- Aye.
Is anybody against it? There's nobody against it, it's been approved.
Yep.
And with that, I would like to go to Section C, according to this. Uh, for the vice chairperson, I would recommend Jim Cardman again, because he's into so many different things and he gives us very good knowledge of stuff that I think people in the whole group can use. So I'll make a motion to Jim Cardman be the vice chair.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Everybody for, say aye.
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 Everybody against, say no. There is no no, so Jim Cardman, you're back in the chair, you and I both. But you know, I, I, I really enjoy doing this. It's a, uh, it's something that, uh, very, very interesting, and we have so many good people that, that are speaking on behalf of, uh, your communities and giving us, uh, updates and knowledge that somehow, well, not so much for people in the city, you know? But, uh, for, for the people out there and all those thirty-eight other, uh, communities, uh, people want to know what's going on, and this is a good way to do it. And you, people like Cardman and, and John Groh, and even Lisa Austin, uh, she always has some agenda going that, that, uh, gets people thinking of, uh, what could be, be happening in the future. So with that, I'm going to, uh, I thank everybody for voting for me and I, I, uh, appreciate it. And we will go to, uh, the Bayfront Quarter lawsuit discussion. Who is going to do that?
Well, Charles, that was a request by Lisa to have that on the agenda. However, I see that she's dropped off the call, um, so I just sent a text to Laura to just keep an eye to see, you know, cause sometimes, right?
I think she wanted that table, didn't she honey?
No, that was her presentation, uh, for District Two. Um, so Laura, are you seeing her, are you seeing her trying to get back in at all on your side?
I am not, I noticed she was out too.
Okay, and she's not texting me, so I would say we skip it, cause that was her.
Ladies. Okay.
Well, Adam Trot used to, talked about that some, I don't know if he wants to say where to do, is he still on?
No, no, it's just, it's just our little, it's just our little group.
Hey.
Okay.
I just have one comment. Pardon me, I'm gonna go off on a tangent a little bit here, so people that know me, know I do this once in a while. I know that everybody has a right to come and speak before the planning commission on planning matters. Uh, if it's to discuss litigation that is going on, I'm not sure what the purpose of that is. Uh, it's not legal counsel advising the planning commission, so I'm not sure what the purpose of, uh, this uh, presentation or discussion would be. So now sadly, I will not be at our next meeting. And I, here I am saying this on my way out before, you know, cause I won't be at the next meeting. I know I have to work that night, I know my schedule already, so. But, uh, like I said, why is that being brought up? And honey, I'm not poking at you on that there, I'm just saying, hey, uh, this is, if it's a legal matter and it's discussion of that litigation, why do we need to know about it?
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't be able to comment.
Right, yeah.
On that.
We don't, John, just to let you know, and we don't, we've had.
I know, I know that, yeah.
We've had monthly before and we just kind of let it ramble and
Oh, God.
Look around at each other and say, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I know, I know, but, you know, what's the, so, okay. I said my.
Yeah, there was no, so to, to, I guess, provide some clarification, there was no, um, there was no details, right, on what, it was just, could, could we have a discussion on the, of the, the lawsuit? So that was it. So that's all I, I just put on the, the agenda.
Okay, I, I understand, I know honey, and everybody has a right to, but, you know, it's gotta be a purposeful discussion for us.
For sure, for sure.
I think we're all in this situat- uh, we're all in the situation where we don't want to deny anybody the right to.
Right, and I understand that, I know, I know. Free speech is.
The thing is, uh, that Lisa has been on this for quite a while, and we gave her the opportunity to speak about it many times. And, and there's nothing we can do about it, because we aren't not even involved in the, uh, uh, roundabouts, she's talking about the roundabouts down on the Bayfront is what her, her problem is. And, and, you know, I, I kind of agree with her, it's a waste of money and, and I don't think they really need to win on, uh, on Holland Street. But, uh, yeah, they're gonna do it regardless, and, uh, there's nothing we can do. Yeah, and, and so there's really nothing to discuss unless you're a lawyer, and, and she's not.
Okay.
So, what benefit would it do for the planning commission? I don't know. But we always give people the right to talk about stuff, so.
As we should.
Maybe we're going a little bit too far at times.
Okay, anyway, sorry, I didn't mean to get off.
Thanks, John. Good to see you again, buddy, I haven't seen you in a while.
Well, I still come out of my cave once in a while, you know?
We all do right now. Hey, hey people, if, if you didn't get your COVID thing yet, make sure you get a single shot for it. I'm telling you, I have it and I, it's, I've had it since June. And it's just killing me, I can't get rid of it. The shingles is, it's worse than the COVID, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But anyway, with that, uh, uh, I'm glad that we had this, this many people to ta- talk about so many different things, because sometimes you, uh, you, you don't know what's going on in those communities, but we've got people that, uh, are smart enough to give us the info. And that's, especially honey, boy, she's right on top of everything. And so is John McGriner. They are two of the best, uh, down there, I think, right now, uh, that I know of, uh, uh. And, uh, with that, I'm going to, uh, say thank you all and, uh, ask for an adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by.
Paul.
Paul.
Yep.
Who's second?
I do. No matter, that's it. I don't care, let's get out of here.
Everybody, we all.
Everybody, have a good night.
Yeah.
Good night.
Everyone.
Aye.
Yeah, buddy.
Okay, thank you people.
Thank you, Charles. Good night.
Yeah, thank you honey for, uh, helping me out a little bit on some of this stuff. I'm, like I said, the shingles been just giving me a lot of trouble.
Ugh, yeah, no, my parents have dealt with that.